All right, it is 7:00 PM. I would like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council
Recording in progress.
meeting for Monday, April 26, 2021. If we could say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Please remember your county, city, and state. Lanyon.
Present, City of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Pratt.
Present, City of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Bellinger.
Here, uh, City of Cow- uh, um, Ingham County, City of Williamson, Michigan.
Weiss.
Here, City of Williamson, Ingham County, State of Michigan.
Reins.
Present, City of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Gilroy.
Here, City of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Smith.
Present, City of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Thank you, Barb. Now I'm looking for approval of the agenda unless there's a council member that needs to have a change made.
Lanyon moves to approve agenda.
Thank you.
Bellinger, support.
Thank you both. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll for the approval of the agenda?
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Holly, I see that we have a lot of guests on this evening. Do we have anybody for audience participation this evening?
Um, sure, yeah.
All right.
Mayor Gilroy, I believe most of these people are, uh, for the, one of the following agenda items.
Great, okay. Um, I'll move along then. Um, we have a very, very special recognition, uh, that I'd like to read. We have a, a centurion that will be celebrating her 100th birthday, uh, coming up this weekend. And so what I would like to read, and I believe that we have family, uh, joining us this evening on our Zoom, um, so let me proceed. Whereas Henrietta Kelly Terrio will be honored on her 100th birthday on May 1st, two, 2021, with a COVID-friendly drive-by parade at her home in Williamson. And whereas she was born in Holly, Michigan, in her parents' farmhouse on May 1st, 1921. As the oldest in her immediate family, she helped care for her three younger brothers while her mother was gravely ill. She graduated from Farmington High School and worked in a dairy ice cream store where she met her eventual husband Joe. Whereas she and Joe married in 1942, at the time of World War II, and they moved to the Detroit area as newlyweds. After Joe came home from the war, they started their family. They had seven girls and six boys, a true baker's dozen. They raised their 13 children in that home in northwest Detroit. Kelly has 38 grandchildren and 50-plus great-grandchildren. Whereas retiring in Williamson in 1987, they joined St. Mary's Parish. They enjoyed many dinners with friends at the Williamson Senior Center and frequented Brookshire Restaurant and Golf Course. Kelly took painting lessons at the community center and has always enjoyed art, design, and creative ventures. Whereas she and her husband traveled by car with their children from Michigan to California, down to Florida, and throughout the eastern, western, and southern United States, including Alaska. Her love of history and travel has also taken her to Europe, where she has enjoyed making friends and seeing ancient architecture and art firsthand. And whereas we celebrate this Williamson centurion as she has lived during the most eventful century of the world's history and treasure her love for this town and her contributions to humanity. So now, therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Williamson expresses its honor and pleasure to extend this certificate of recognition on this 26th day of April, 2021, to Henrietta Kelly Terrio on the occasion of her 100th birthday with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many, many more productive years. Thank you so much for letting our city council be a part of this recognition for Kelly. It is an honor to be able to always do something like this for one of our community members. And from what I understand, there's going to be the parade that will be driving by, uh, her home this coming Saturday, starting at, I believe, 2:00 PM. And so if anybody is available to drive by, honk, wave, um, please do. It would put a smile on her face, I am sure of it. And I hope that it's good weather, and I hope that the celebration is very, very joyous. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Is she with us on the call? Yes.
Yes, she is.
Where is she?
Jean Gentile.
Oh, there she is.
That's our mom.
All right, wave to us.
Hey, Mom.
Jeannie, take her off mute. Take her off mute, Jean.
Jeannie, she's on mute.
She's trying to get it off. We'd love to have her say hello real quick.
Lower left corner.
Thank you very much, though. There she is. Happy birthday, Jeannie. Kelly. Hi, Kelly.
Yes.
Happy birthday, Mom. Happy birthday. Thank you for being here this evening with us.
Yeah, I was gonna be saying.
You're gonna be hungry.
Don't even remember.
It's a true honor to have you here with us this evening.
What'd she say?
She said it's an honor to have you.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I'm honored to be noticed.
Well, it sounds like you're gonna have a wonderful celebration on Saturday.
I didn't realize that.
You didn't? It's okay. All right, well, thank you so much. And to the family of, of Kelly, thank you so much for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we'll go ahead and move along with our agenda. Uh, we have accounts payable, and Noah, you had an opportunity to review those, so I'll go ahead and turn this over to you.
Yeah, thank you, council, and thank you, mayor. Uh, I did have a chance to review all the accounts payable. Uh, you should have received an email, uh, notifying that there were a couple of questions, and Rachel and, um, Cory answered them. So with all that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve checks 74250 dated 4/5/21 to check 74295 dated 4/16/21 in the total amount of $38,695.23.
Thank you, Noah, and I'm looking for support on that. And I do realize that we have to jump back up, and we will approve the council meeting minutes of April 12th after we, uh, take care of accounts payable. Do I have support per accounts payable?
Looks like Jeff has a question.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll support it, and yes, I do have a question.
Thank you.
Uh, just a question about the, um, check 74282 to Pinchura LC McCormick Park Boogie Board. Uh, maybe it was in the email. I didn't, haven't checked my email this afternoon, but is it a pass-through for Parks or for 2609?
Cory can answer that one, but I believe it is.
I don't know if Cory's on the call.
Yeah, I don't see Cory.
Oh, did he have the baby?
Yeah, they had the baby.
Yay! Well, that's a perfect excuse for him not to be here.
Yeah, they had a, they had a boy yesterday.
Okay, cool.
Fantastic.
So maybe Rachel could, uh, react to this one or respond to this.
I, I, I think you have Holly and myself.
We have Holly and Barb. So with that being said.
I am familiar with this one, and, uh, the Pinchura, uh, is the new piece of playground equipment that the Friends of Williamson Parks has gotten, it does pass through the city. You are correct.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that.
They've already paid us for the, the reimbursement.
Excellent.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other questions regarding accounts payable that may or may not be able to be answered this evening? If you do, I would ask that you follow up with Rachel, um, tomorrow, but, uh, we did have support for that. So Barb, would you call the roll for accounts payable?
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Fantastic. I'm gonna jump back up to item number seven on the agenda. I'm looking for approval, uh, motion to move forward, uh, council meeting minutes of April 12th, 2021.
So.
There you go.
Thank you both. Thank you. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll for the council meeting minutes?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, and now I will go ahead and I'm going to move into our public hearing on the Downtown Development Authority Plan Amendment at 7:11. This is an opportunity for a public hearing. We do not have Cory, our city manager, here this evening. Um, we do have, uh, the, uh, recommended motion for the plan amendment that we'll take care of in the action items. Uh, Holly, did we have anybody that has joined us regarding the public hearing for the Downtown Development Authority Plan Amendment?
We have two guests here. I'm not sure if they're here for the amendment or not.
Okay, uh, it looks like we have JP Landoster and Ellie Lipton. Are either of you here for the public hearing?
Uh, this, this is Ellie. I'm actually John, but I'm logged into her account from Spicer Group. No, I'm not here for the public.
All right, thanks for chiming in. Appreciate it.
No, I'm not here for that either.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, it looks like then we don't, did we receive any correspondence, um, calls or written, uh, regarding the public hearing, Holly?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Mayor Gilroy?
Yes, go ahead.
Just in short, uh, this is, uh, in order for the DDA to move forward with the project here, they have to have the plan amendment, and this includes the two projects, the boardwalk and then the, um, the kayak launch, uh, and parking lot area. It has to bring them in and officially make them part of the plan amendment. So in brief, that's what it is.
Great, thanks, Scott. I appreciate that. And it looks like we're gonna, that's gonna be our first action item.
It is.
Um, once, once we move there. Uh, with that being said then, um, if there is, if there's no discussion or questions regarding this public hearing, I'm looking for a, uh, motion to, uh, move out of our public hearing.
You don't need a motion, Mayor Gilroy.
Okay, thanks, Holly. I see Tim over there. Thanks, Tim. All right, uh, then we will go ahead and move on to our action items. And our first action item is the first reading of the Downtown Development Authority Plan Amendment ordinances. Um, we have that in the packet, and there is a recommended motion.
I'll make the motion, mayor.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to confirm the adoption of the City Williamson Downtown Development Authority's 10th amended Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan Amendment.
Thank you.
Second, Lanyon.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any questions, um, that could be answered by, uh, possibly Scott or, or Tim? Any questions or discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and ask Barb to call the roll then.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, second action item is the CSX Crossing Facility Encroachment Agreement. Scott, can you go ahead and answer any questions or, um, fill us in a little bit on this?
Yes, I sure can. Um, I believe that, uh, Tim might have, uh, some input as well if we need to, uh, from a legal standpoint. But, um, the CSX Crossing has to do with the Elevator Street Project. We are replacing, uh, two water mains that are old, over 100 years old or so, and then decommissioning those and putting a new 12-inch line. I think Cory talked about this at a previous council meeting as well. Um, we've gone through the agreements. They have modified, they were adding in to the agreement the 12-inch sanitary sewer that was actually stalled back in the 1980s because they found that there was some missing agreement information there. But since we were able to provide some documentation that we found in the files, um, they're not charging some of the extra money for that, so the cost has slightly gone down by like $500.
Thank you, Scott. And Tim, I see you come off mute.
Um, nothing further, really. I did review this, and it did go through a couple of slight revisions before it got to the point where you have it right now. No objection.
Great, thank you, Scott. Thank, thank you, Tim. Does anybody have any questions regarding this or discussion before I ask for that motion to move forward?
Uh, I'll make the motion already.
Okay, and then Dan will come back to you.
Oh, sorry, Dan. I was just gonna say, so, uh, as representative for Tifa, um, we did obviously bring this up and send it to them. There was, uh, questions that Cory, um, and Scott were able to answer for us just regarding, you know, why we were paying the money and stuff like that. It's about having to fill in the pipes and, um, they have to send people there to overview some of the work that's being done, things like that. So that's why there's money. It's coming out of the Tifa fund. Um, we just need the, uh, city council approval to go down that route.
All right, thank you, Brandon. Dan, you had your hand up.
Doesn't some of this also tie in with the ability for Tifa to sell the Ice House and that entire project?
Yep, that's accurate.
This is part of the requirement for, for all that to, to go through.
Yeah, and Scott has more, uh, info on this than I do, but that is part of like that whole route area right there, that road, the water main, all that is part of that whole Tifa district that we're looking to trade and get ready for that Ice House.
So the, the phase that's moving forward right now is the water main work, the sanitary sewer work, and then a portion of the road being from North Putnam to about the First Catch Basins, which are about 150 feet or so from the center line of, of north or south Putnam, I'm sorry. Um, and then there'll be gravel to merge it back into the existing gravel drive. And then later phases, as money's available, we'll come back and, and complete the street portion. But you are correct, Dan, it does provide the ability for that Ice House property to get proper water and sewer service as well as vehi- vehicle access. It also serves the DPW compound as well, um, on the northern end where a lot of the truck traffic is.
Thank you both.
It solves a major problem for us on the water system side because we can get across the tracks and make the tie-ins properly over there.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, I am looking for a motion then to move this forward.
All right, um, so Lanyon moves to approve a facility encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc. for the installation of a new water main beneath CSX Railroad Crossing to benefit the Tifa District.
Thank you. We have support?
Second, Reins.
Thank you both. Uh, if there's no further discussion, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yeah.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right, uh, action item C is, um, looking for a motion to set the public hearing for the 2021, 2022 fiscal budget, May 10th, at 20, May 10th, 2021, at 7:05 PM.
Uh, I'll make a motion to Lanyon to set public hearing.
Thank you.
Second, Weiss.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do not have any documents in the packet. Those will be, uh, brought forward, uh, at the, uh, public hearing. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, the last action item this evening is the engineering services for the 2023, uh, calendar year North Putnam Street Project. And, uh, Scott, can you go ahead and, uh, lead us through this?
Yes, there's a memo in your packet as well that prepared. Um, we're asking for approval of the professional, uh, services contract for engineering for the, the, uh, survey and design phase, uh, for the North Putnam Street Project. We have received a notification of being eligible for the grant, the small urban funds that we have gotten on four other projects in 2006, 2010, 2017, and 2019. The most recent projects were the Middle Street Projects. Um, we only get these funds every two or three years on the average these days. Um, it's a grant of $375,000 towards the construction. The city does have to pay for the engineering portion, um, separately, and then we're responsible for match money as well for the construction phase. This is a very extensive project. Uh, it's gonna be complete reconstruction from the intersection of East Riverside up to the north to the intersection of Bismarck Street. And it's going to encompass the water mains, the sanitary sewer. Uh, there's gonna be probably a little bit of work with the storm system as well. And then, um, the entire road depth and width and sidewalks. Uh, there's significant elevation changes on the east side of the road, if you've driven down through there. Uh, we've had numerous complaints and problems with homeowners down through their bottoming out their cars as they try and go up the steep grades of the driveway and, and then across as they get to the higher elevation. Um, we have residents that we have found out that have, uh, water quality problems in that area. Um, the project is also recently found that it could be eligible for some of this appropriation money from Slotkin's office, so we've also put in for that. Um, if that occurs, we would be able to substitute that grant money for the, for the small urban funds and possibly do some adjoining work on other streets nearby. Uh, mainly probably South Putnam going across the bridge and, and towards the center of town. Possibly even some of High Street there in the first block are some of our thoughts on that initially. But until we know that we would qualify for that other money, we have to stick to the original scope of the project. Um, because of the significance of all the environmental regulations that have changed, as well as the right-of-way work that's gonna have to be done with the driveways, um, there's a very extensive and lengthy process we have to go through to do that in order to keep this project on time. It makes sense to get started now. We have budgeted money in this year's fiscal budget for $20,000. That lines up very well with the soil boring portion, the survey portion, and some of the initial work towards the environmental reviews that have to be done. Um, and then we have adequate money budgeted in the upcoming budget that you're going to be looking at in the first meeting in May for adoption. Um, so I guess with that, we've got, uh, Spicer has worked on the last two big projects like this for us, and they went very well with the, the two projects on, on Middle Street. Um, we asked them to prepare a proposal for this project. Uh, when we selected them for the other projects, we went through a quality-based selection process with several engineering firms, and Spicer ended up, um, being the selected engineering firm at that time. So, um, I guess I'll open up to any questions. Hopefully I've explained it in pretty good detail.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Scott? If no questions, I'm looking for a motion then to move this forward.
Um, I mean, all right, I'll, I'll, Lanyon makes the motion to approve the contract with Spicer Group for professional engineering services, um, for the 2023 North Putnam Street Reconstruction, um, dot lab project, um, not to exceed 101195.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you both. Uh, if there's no further discussion or questions, I will go ahead and ask Barb to call the roll.
Pratt.
Yeah.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our agent, our, our action items for this evening. We do not have any discussion items. We did receive our city manager report, um, in our packet, and congratulations to Cory and his family on the birth of their new son yesterday. Um, sending good wishes to the entire family as, as they have this special time. Um, so, um, I would say if there's any questions that someone might have, um, from the report, uh, feel free to contact, um, send Cory an email, um, but just know that, um, it might be a little delayed response on that. And we have Chief here this evening. Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening. Your turn.
There is really nothing going on at the PD. Things are quiet. We've got our officer training. He's doing a good job. Um, hoping to get him off FTL here the next month or so. So other than that, uh, things are going good.
All right, great. Well, thanks for being here this evening. Appreciate it. All right, um, I have, uh, opportunity now, uh, for subcommittee committee reports. Anybody, uh, attend one of your board meetings that you'd like to pass on or share some information?
Uh, I mean, we didn't, uh, we had a meeting for Tifa, uh, we approved our budgets, um, and then passed along, um, what we just voted on today. So that's the extent of our excitement.
All right, thanks, Brandon. Anyone else raise their hands? If not, I'll go ahead and move to audience participation. Holly, did we have anybody else join us?
Uh, we did not. I think just John Bradley is still here.
All right, thank you so much. All right, council member comments. Noah, go ahead. Uh, I'll start with you.
Uh, I'd like to vote a big thank you and call out to Chief Jim Wolfe. Uh, basically, he helped volunteer this, uh, previous weekend, and we went down and rototilled all the sandball volleyball courts. And he provided the large, uh, we're a tiller, and then, uh, he brought, um, I don't know, Chief, if you can speak to the other person that was there, it was Mr. Smith, I believe.
It was my brother-in-law, Whit Moncrief.
Okay, and, um, basically we got it all done. It looked great, and this is all helping the Kiwanis. So Chief, thank you very much for, for doing that, supporting the Kiwanis.
You're welcome, sir.
Great, thanks, Noah. Brandon?
Uh, ironically enough, I also have to thank Chief and all of Williamson PD. Uh, this weekend, someone stole all of my wife's information, uh, online, and they were very good. They jumped right on it for me. So, uh, thank you very much, uh, you and your guys that took great care of us.
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry to hear that. If you need anything else, just let us know.
Thank you.
All right, Jean.
Well, um, yeah, definitely big congratulations to Cory and, and his family on the addition. And, um, again, ha- big happy birthday to, uh, to Kelly, 100. That's a big one. Um, and I think really I'd just wrap it up by saying, uh, how refreshing it is and, and great it is to see, uh, Chief Wolfe. Um, he is really leading from the front with these guys. I'm constantly seeing him out on patrol, making traffic stops, meeting with the public. Um, he is just knocking this out of the park. The guys absolutely respect and adore him. And, um, I, man, we, we really are blessed to, to have him, so that's all I got.
All right, Chief, you're batting 100 right now. I'm gonna move on to Dan and see if we can keep the streak going.
Um, I just want to say a big congratulations to Cory and his family, and other than that, no comments.
All right, moving right along, we've got Tom Pratt.
Um, I, I guess no comments for me tonight, other than congratulations to Cory.
All right, Mr. Weiss.
Yeah, just, uh, shout out Deputy Treasurer Ann Casper for taking care of the shut-off notices. Uh, the initial mailing is 72 shut-off notices. So that's not a popular thing to do, calling to collect on, uh, water bills. We, we've all seen our share of, uh, contention with the water bills in the city, both in person and, and every other way, so. Um, thanks, Ann. You did a great job.
Thanks, and I wanna go ahead and give a shout-out to Barb. Thank you so much for, um, your efforts putting together the recognition for, uh, Kelly. And it was so neat to be able to have so many of her family and friends on the call this evening. Um, what, and what, just an amazing, um, celebration. You know, we should all be so lucky, um, to, to have something like that happen. Um, so my, uh, best wishes, and, and again, happy birthday to, to Kelly, and thank you so much to, for all of them being here. Thank you to all of the staff. I mean, we're rolling into spring. We had a little Thank you to all of the staff. I mean, we're rolling into spring. We had a little snow action over the weekend, which was, you know, but it's becoming nicer. Limb and branch pickup is going on. We're transitioning into those services. And great job, staff, on water collection. That's, that's a difficult one. And, and so thanks for acknowledging that, Councilman Weiss. It's, it's nice that our staff gets that recognition. Just a reminder to, you know, just be watchful out there. We are transitioning, which means there's probably more pedestrians walking, bicyclers. Be careful as, as you're out there and enjoy the weather, enjoy the parks. I'm sure that the parks are becoming more active. Now that we have that nice weather, we're moving into spring and summer where there hopefully will be a lot of fun events. And I'm sure that Dan will continue to give us Jubilee updates when we meet again. But that's it for me for this evening, and it looks like it's 7:31. So I will go ahead and call to adjourn City Council meeting at 7:31 this evening. Thank you, everybody.
Recording stopped.
Before everybody leaves.
Yes.
Also, we'll need you guys to schedule times to come in and sign those proclamations.
Perfect. Thank you for that reminder, Holly. I appreciate it. And if everybody could try to get in before this Saturday so we can have that signed proclamation, I'd like to take it over and deliver it as a part of my drive-through the parade.
Mayor can... All day Wednesday.
Okay.
Half a day Thursday, so.
And if we could get it over to Noah so that he could sign it at home, maybe we could make those arrangements for him as well. Got you covered, Noah.
Gotcha, thanks.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, everybody.